Good morning, this is a public hearing of February 20th, 2018. Chair Sharon Novassen.
Here.
Commissioner Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin. Commissioner Chen. Commissioner Devonshire. Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Luffey. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Voss. Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
Good morning Commissioners. The first item on our research agenda is LP 2602, 22 East 29th Street, AKA 18 to 20 East 29th Street, 15 to 17 East 28th Street, 90 to 94 Madison Avenue, Hotel Seville, now the James New York, Manhattan Block 858, Lot 17 in part. Item to be heard is the proposed designation of a Beaux-Arts style hotel building designed by Harry Allen Jacobs and built in 1901 to 04, and the Beaux-Arts Through Block Annex designed by Charles T. Mott and built in 1906 to 07. Presenting is Mary Ann Hurley.
Good morning Commissioners. The Hotel Seville at 22 East 29th Street is a distinctive Beaux-Arts style hotel notable for its architecture and its importance within the development of New York City's hotels during the early 20th century. The hotel is prominently located at the southwest corner of Madison Avenue and East 29th Street, north of Madison Square. The proposed boundary with an L-shaped footprint includes the hotel's corner section that opened in 1904, and the through-block annex completed a few years later in 1907. During the 1870s, the neighborhood north of Madison Square was filled with row houses. By the late 19th century, the area became a bustling commercial and entertainment district. The photographed at the left shows the neighborhood just before the Hotel Seville was constructed. The church in the foreground is the future location of the hotel. Capitalizing on the potential clientele, investors built the hotel with its entrance along East 29th Street as shown in the photo at the right. The hotel was moderately priced and appealed to both visitors and permanent guests alike. Its promotional material emphasized its proximity to department stores, theaters, churches, and transportation lines. The hotel also catered to business travelers who appreciated being close to nearby office buildings and commercial showrooms. The management was proud of the steel construction and emphasized the numerous windows that provided floods of sunshine and cooling breezes. It was a "modern hotel with a home-like atmosphere." Harry Allen Jacobs designed the 12-story corner addition of the hotel that was completed first in 1904. He was a graduate of Columbia's Architecture Program and the École des Beaux-Arts in Paris. Charles T. Mott, another New York City architect and also brother-in-law of the owner, designed the through-block annex that was completed a few years later in 1907. As seen in the middle photograph, the addition was one story shorter but continued the earlier Beaux-Arts design. This annex extended to East 28th Street as seen in the photograph on the right. The Hotel Seville's distinctive striped limestone and red brick provides a backdrop for French-inspired sculptural details. Particularly notable are the festooned cartouches each topped with a lion's head, large decorative window openings at the first floor, and curved bow-window bays with ornamental metalwork. The Hotel Seville is representative of a large number of New York City hotels constructed during the first decade of the 20th century. It was typical in its Beaux-Arts style, mid-range accommodations, and even its 12-story height. The height corresponded with the New York City Building Code at the time that had more stringent fire code requirements for hotels taller than 12 stories. Shown here are a few similar Beaux-Arts hotels constructed at the same time as the Hotel Seville: the Hotel Wolcott on the left, the Hotel Marseille, also designed by Harry Allen Jacobs, and the Hotel St. Louis, and they're all New York City landmarks. The Hotel Seville was upgraded, remodeled, and renamed the Carlton in 1987. Additional remodeling work has included the removal of multi-light casement and fanlight windows, the addition of a new corner entrance, and remodeling at the lower floors. The proposed landmark site is a lot in part, including the original corner building and the 1907 through-block annex as shown on the map. Excluded from the proposed landmark site is an addition constructed in 2004 to provide an entrance along Madison Avenue, and that new entrance is shown in the dashed line on the map and at the photograph on the right. This elegant building, today known as the James Nomad Hotel, remains a striking example of a Beaux-Arts style hotel with its finely crafted decorative features that enliven the facades. With its corner location, it continues to be a significant contributor to the streetscape along Madison Avenue.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Are there any questions? Right, we can take testimony. Leila Logueziko from Community Board Five.
Good morning Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this morning. If that's okay, my testimony would actually touch on the Seville Hotel as well as the Emmett Building. My name is Leila Logueziko, I'm the Chair of the Landmarks Committee of Manhattan Community Board Five. CB5 is in favor of designation of the two properties being considered today. We believe that they're both significant architectural buildings of our district, and they're both deserving of landmark status and should be preserved. CB5 applauds LPC's decision to calendar these buildings, and furthermore, CB5 takes this opportunity, the opportunity of this hearing, to ask LPC to consider the expansion of the Madison Square North Historic District as it has been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christabel Goff.
Christabel Goff for the Society for the Architecture of the City. Thank you for returning to the area outside the exceedingly regrettable northern boundary of the Madison Square North Historic District. It is too late for the oldest and the most culturally and architecturally important buildings that were there, but some 20 years ago, we did indeed ask for the Hotel Seville to be included. It was a part, if a small part, of the turn-of-the-century artistic, architectural, and economic ferment that transformed the core of a sedate and fashionable brownstone rowhouse neighborhood into what was briefly the artistic epicenter of New York: the scene of dramatic events in the history of American photography, and the first exhibitions of Brancusi, Cezanne, and Matisse organized by Sneadletts and Steichen at 291 Fifth Avenue and at the Camera Club, and the first home of Duveens and Nodlers, the first Waldorf Astoria on the side of the Empire State Building. The Hotel Seville was a secondary player among the new hotels there but a charming one, and a survivor it seems, part of a streetscape that has retained character, so we continue to support its designation.
Thank you. The next speaker is Judy Olson.
Good morning, Judy Olson. Commissioners, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak here this morning in support of designation for the Hotel Seville. I represent the 29th Street Neighborhood Association, which enthusiastically supports the designation of the Hotel Seville. This remarkable Beaux-Arts building contributes significantly to the historic fabric of the area, just steps away from the Madison Square North District. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ward Dennis.
Good morning Commissioners, Ward Dennis with Higgins Quays Barth. I'm speaking today on behalf of the owner, sponsor of the James New York Hotel, GFI Development Incorporated. GFI acquired this building in 2015 and since then has undertaken a major rehabilitation of the property that included substantial exterior restoration. GFI operates a number of landmark-designated hotels in New York and supports the designation of the historic sections of the former Hotel Seville, and they look forward to working with the Landmarks Commission on the continuing operation of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Andrea Goldwin.
Good day Chair Sharon Novassen and Commissioners, I'm Andrea Goldwin, speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. The Conservancy is pleased to support designation of the former Hotel Seville, which is listed as an individual landmark on the State and National Registers of Historic Places. Architect Harry Allen Jacobs designed the main hotel, excuse me, the main section of the hotel in 1901 in a robust Beaux-Arts style. The 12-story building anchors the corner of Madison and 29th Street. Its muscular facade features vibrant alternating bands of brick and limestone at the three-story base, and alternating bands of brick and white terracotta on the upper stories crowned with a projecting metal cornice. At the corner, the entrance is at the chamfered base, on the upper floors is a curved copper bay of windows. The Seville recalls the era when this section of Madison Avenue was changing from an affluent residential district to an area of more moderate hotels for residents and visitors. This trend was associated with the northward construction of the subway and compounded as New York needed more and more hotels to accommodate tourists and business travelers, especially near Times Square and the Garment District. Like many other hotels in this neighborhood, the Seville had a downturn in the later 20th century, but has undergone a remarkable renaissance now known as the James. As development pressures have increased in the Madison Square North section and other buildings have been lost, we thank the Commission for recognizing the former Hotel Seville and urge a quick designation vote. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kelly Carroll.
Good morning Commissioners, it's been a while. Kelly Carroll at the Historic District's Council. This building was suggested as a possible landmark in 2007 when we did a survey of this area. The survey had the goal of extending the Madison Square North Historic District, which the LPC as yet has declined to designate despite the proposal's merit and strong public support. We are grateful that the Commission is taking some action in this area today and strongly support this designation. The former Hotel Seville replaced the former Scottish Rite Hall and is an individual landmark on the National Register. After 1900, the Madison Square area hotels grew in size to accommodate customers desiring close proximity to Ladies Mile and entertainment such as that offered at Madison Square Garden. This elegant Beaux-Arts hotel, whose architect was a prominent proponent of the style in America and who trained at the École des Beaux-Arts in Paris, was one such large hotel with originally 425 rooms when it opened with various appointments. Its red brick and limestone facades are graced with a rusticated base, alternated band courses at the second and third stories, decorative cornices, copper bays, and a limestone-clad chamfered corner, all mixed with modern French ornamentations such as lion-head cartouches. An annex between 28th and 29th Streets was added a few years after its construction. And as an interesting link in history, HDC's own Barbara Zay's lineage can be traced to the Hotel Seville, where her descendants called home for most of the early 20th century. Her ancestors, the Immer family, owned Immer and Amen, a substantial chemical and drug firm now demolished, which was on Third Avenue and 18th. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? I just want to enter into the record that we received testimony from State Senator Liz Kruger, Assembly Member Richard Gottfried, and Councilmember Ben Kahlos, all writing in support of the hotel. So are there any other, any questions? Right, in that case we can close the hearing, and our research team will continue to do research, and then we will bring this back for a vote soon. I make motion to close the hearing.
Item number two this morning is LP 2603, 95 Madison Avenue, the Emmett Building, Manhattan Block 858, Lot 58. Item to be heard is the proposed designation of a 16-story neo-Renaissance office building designed by Barney &amp; Colt for Dr. Thomas Addis-Emmett in 1912. Presenting is Margaret Herman.
Good morning. 95 Madison Avenue, also known as the Emmett Building, is a 16-story office building designed by the firm of Barney &amp; Colt for Dr. Thomas Addis-Emmett in 1912. With its neo-Renaissance decoration and neo-Gothic vertical effects that embody the early 20th century skyscraper style in New York City, the Emmett Building is an outstanding example of the commercial architecture built to serve the wholesale furniture and textile industries moving into the neighborhood just north of Madison Square Park. 95 Madison Avenue is located between East 28th and 29th Streets. The proposed landmark site consists of the tax lot, Block 858, Lot 58. 95 Madison Avenue was built by Dr. Thomas Addis-Emmett, widely recognized as an important gynecological surgeon in the 19th century. Dr. Emmett was hired in 1855 as the Director of Surgery of the city's first women's hospital located at 83 Madison Avenue, shown in blue on the map on the left. After the women's hospital moved uptown to 50th and Lexington in 1867, Dr. Emmett acquired four houses on the same block as the old hospital, shown outlined in red on the map. He used 89 Madison Avenue for his family's residence, and numbers 91, 93, and 95 for his medical office and private surgery practice. In 1912, he developed the Emmett Building on the 100 by 100-foot site encompassing these four houses. By the early 1900s, Dr. Emmett was retired, and the area north of Madison Square Park was becoming a center for wholesale furniture and textile businesses. In 1911, Dr. Emmett and his son formed a real estate company and decided to replace the four houses with a new tall office building, one that would also include a penthouse residence for Dr. Emmett himself. The Emmetts hired the architecture firm of Barney &amp; Colt for the project. John Stuart Barney and Stockton Beekman Colt each had successful practices prior to joining together for this building, completing a number of Gothic and Renaissance revival hotels, commercial buildings, and churches, including Barney's landmark Church of the Holy Trinity on East 88th Street. At 95 Madison, Barney &amp; Colt designed a 16-story building that consisted of 15 floors of open commercial space that could be adapted to tenants' needs for offices and showrooms, and a lavish top-floor residence and roof garden for Dr. Emmett. The office floors had 11-foot ceilings and windows that allowed for large amounts of sunlight on both sides of the building, a major selling point. The steel-framed building is clad in limestone on the first three floors and terracotta on the upper floors. Located on a corner site, the building features a tripartite organization with heavy corner bays framing three center bays. The decoration of the Emmett Building combines early French Renaissance ornament with a neo-Gothic vertical effect created by pilasters running uninterrupted from the fourth to the 11th story. The green marble columns at the ground level are inlaid with vertical lines of limestone which connect to the limestone facing of the three-story base. Elaborate composite capitals, medieval figures, canopies, and gargoyles also provide decorative interest on the lower stories. The upper five stories and attic level are encrusted with Renaissance motifs, including monumental arcaded windows, elaborate cornices, foliate friezes, and a mansard roof with step The Emmett Building's extravagant decoration and overarching verticality were meant to distinguish it within the city's newest business district. At the time of its completion, the Emmett Building was a unique example of an office building developed by an individual with his own residential space included. Owned and operated by another family since the 1940s, the Emmett Building is a remarkably intact example of early 20th century commercial architecture in New York and a prominent reminder of the development of the area north of Madison Square Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Right, this is really, it's an incredibly beautiful building, and some of us from LPC had gone there for a site visit. It's beautifully maintained, it has great presence on the block, and is very deserving. So we will take testimony, Rita Sklar.
Thank you. A long time ago, before any of us were born, four men lived whose lives intertwined with ours and bring us together today. Dr. Addis-Emmett decided to build a 16-story commercial skyscraper and to relocate his private residence to its top floor, a unique idea for its time. He engaged the arrector firma Barney &amp; Colt, and together they created a grandeur that has withstood the test of time. The fourth man in our story was a poor immigrant from Slips, Russia, my grandfather, Louis Shilsky. He started his career in real estate by watching over walk-ups owned by his old transplant of friends when they went to the mountains with their families during the summer. One day, one of them said, I'm sorry, one, one, one day, one of them said, "Shilsky, do you want to buy my building? My sons are educated and don't want my business." My grandfather answered, "I'd like to, but I don't have the money." His friend responded, "I'll sell you the building. I know I can trust you to pay me back." In 1943, he purchased 95 Madison Avenue, later my mother selected one of these parcels of properties, and hers contained the Emmett Building as her family jewel. In 1970, I became its steward. Two consummate professionals and special friends join me in my life's journey and have worked with me for decades. The first, James McDonald, is an outstanding, clever, tenacious, enormously capable, and honorable expediter who does everything in his life with integrity and kindness. Together, we spent one and a half years doing historical research on 95. Copies of all of our research have been given to the New York City Landmarks Commission so that the building's history will not be lost. His partnership with me and work through the years and his unfaltering sustaining friendship are deeply treasured. There is another man, an icon known to all of us in New York who love historical properties and their restoration and preservation, awarded the honorary title of Lion by his peers, a pioneer in the field of historical property preservation, Walter B. Melvin. For decades, he oversaw every change in the building, both interior and exterior. My appreciation and gratitude to him for the years of dedicated work and admiration for his extraordinary talent as an architect, Walter would say wistfully, "Buildings need me," and so they do. The Emmett Building is attributed to Dr. Addis-Emmett, Barney &amp; Colt, my grandfather and parents, James McDonald, Walter B. Melvin, and our love of 95 and historical restoration shared. The Emmett Building is a tiny building in a growing sea of towering modern buildings, but she remains a jewel and the grandeur of Midtown South Madison Avenue. There are five men I cannot close without mentioning and thanking: my son Michael, Felix Carr, Chief Carlos Rodriguez, Alfonso Garcia, and Gino Cure. Without them, all of the restoration would not have been possible. May the Emmett Building bring joy to the eyes and hearts of fellow travelers who appreciate historical buildings in the future, even after our names are forgotten. In closing, I would like to commend the meaningful and tireless work of the Landmarks Commission, its Chair, Executive Director, and all of its members. On behalf of all New Yorkers and visitors to our city, without you, New York would have lost so many of our architectural treasures, beautiful buildings of bygone eras. We look forward to a partnership with you throughout the years to come.
Thank you, Ms. Sklar. We also look forward to this partnership. The next speaker is Christabel Goff.
Christabel Goff for the Society for the Architecture of the City. So again, thank you for returning to this interesting neighborhood to honor an extraordinary early example of a decorated tall office building, striking in 1912 when it appeared. Surrounded then by lower buildings, the remains of the elite brownstone neighborhood that Edith Wharton came from and so hated, creating a contrasting broken skyline that fascinated artists with a topographical bent like Joseph Penel and Child Hassem, and photographers like Steichen. The Emmett Building, built for the eponymous cocoon, had a feature, nostalgic and still existing in living memory. Zoning allowed one penthouse apartment for ownership, the king of the castle in his own commercial building, with what must then have been a river-to-river view and perhaps even a glimpse of the Statue of Liberty. Finished a year before the Woolworth Building, the Emmett Building is a wonderful example of a functionally modern massive tower heavily encrusted with ornament, one of the last of its kind. Again, we continue to support it for designation.
Thank you, Christabel. The next speaker is Andrea Goldwin.
Good day Chair Sharon Novassen and Commissioners, I'm Andrea Goldwin, speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. The Conservancy is pleased to support designation of the Emmett Building as an individual landmark. This elegant neo-Renaissance tower dates to 1912. Architects Barney &amp; Colt combined early 20th century revival styles in a building that emphasizes neo-Gothic verticality but is festooned with ornate French Renaissance decoration. The limestone cladding at the base features pilasters whose capitals are decorated with lions, foliate carvings, and cartouches, while the window bays of the central floors are delineated with tall, thin terracotta piers. The arched windows of the elaborate upper stories are surrounded by terracotta carvings, and a mansard roof with massive dormers crowns the building. In his 80s, Dr. Thomas Addis-Emmett built the tower to replace the four townhouses where he had long lived and had his practice. His lavish apartment at the building's upper floor was a showcase for his collection of art, prints, and autographs. One of the city's earliest penthouse residences, it is said to have contained a library, solarium, and roof garden. Unfortunately, it was converted to office space after his death. The Emmett Building is one of many commercial structures just outside the Madison Square North Historic District, an area facing extreme development pressure. We thank the Commission for bringing this and the earlier designation forward and hope that there will be more in the future. This building, eligible for listing on the State and National Registers of Historic Places, certainly merits the protection and guidance that the Landmarks Commission provides. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Judy Olson.
Good morning Judy Olson, I represent the 29th Street Neighborhood Association. I want to thank you for this opportunity, for testifying this morning. The 29th Street Neighborhood Association enthusiastically supports the designation of the Emmett Building at 95 Madison Avenue and 29th Street. Again, this distinctive turn-of-the-century building directly across the street from the Hotel Seville contributes significantly to the historic fabric of this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. Like the Hotel Seville, this is another building which HDC identified as meritorious in the Madison Square North survey, and we are excited to testify today on this building's designation. We sincerely hope that LPC can pursue more buildings in this area, which has a veritable stock of ornamented early 20th century skyscrapers, equally deserving of landmark status. The Emmett Building was constructed for Dr. Thomas Addis-Emmett, a prominent physician and advocate for Irish independence. An outspoken critic of English occupation of Ireland, he was the grandnephew of the famous Irish patriot Robert Emmett, who was hanged, drawn, and quartered by the English in Dublin in 1803 for inciting an uprising. Dr. Emmett lived in a succession of houses on this site for over 40 years, but commissioned the 15-story office building due to observed changes in the neighborhood, especially the construction of the Metropolitan Life Tower in 1909. This striking French Renaissance revival-style building is clad in terracotta and features elaborate Gothic revival ornament. Early designs of this building included the Emmett family crest, which features three bull's heads. In its final design iteration, the crests were removed, but bull's heads exist at the building's termination, a permanent homage to the legacy of the Emmett family. Upon his death, Dr. Emmett's will professed that "Injustice, England must someday become a province of Ireland. This provision shall be published as my last words to the Irish people to whose welfare I have devoted the study and work of a lifetime." Dr. Emmett left his extensive book collection to the Irish-American Historical Society and Notre Dame University, and died in this home in 1919 in the top floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? But just to note, Community Board Five also supports this designation, and we also received testimony, written testimony from State Senator Liz Kruger, Assembly Member Richard Gottfried, and Councilmember Ben Kahlos in support of this designation. Are there any other questions? All right, I just want to note that we are incredibly appreciative to both the owners of the two buildings for their support, and also for just maintaining their buildings beautifully. So thank you all for coming down. So with that, we conclude the hearing. So with that, we conclude the hearing.
The first item is a public meeting item. The application is docket number 1917542, 514 Halsey Street, located in the Bedford-Stuyvesant, expanded Stuyvesant Heights Historic District. This is a vacant lot, and the application is to construct a new building. This was last presented at the public hearing of November 28, 2017. No action was taken at that time.
Good morning, Victor Tumonic Preservation Staff. As you had mentioned, this is 514 Halsey. The Commission saw this presentation back on 11/28 and took no action. At that time, the Commission expressed concern with the massing of the front facade and at the rear. Some commissioners expressed concerns with the size of the openings at the front facade as well as the openness of the door. The applicant has made some reductions at both the front and rear, as well as updated the block plan, and is here to represent a new proposal.
Make a motion to open the proceedings.
Hi, my name is Ted Kane. I'm the architect on the project, working with my clients who are maybe here a little bit later if you want to ask them a question. Just to kind of refresh on the project, so this is currently an empty lot. Originally, can I go back to the first pages? Okay. So on the left is the original tax map, tax photo. Sometime in the 1960s, the building burned down, so it was originally a speculative building. As you can see, there was an original sale listed in the Brooklyn Eagle for it. It was built together with the 516. 514 burned down in sometime in the 60s, and it was demolished for safety reasons. So basically, the lot has been empty for over 60 years. So just looking at the context and the block plan for the site, so generally, the, it's, you know, like the neighborhood, 1890s townhouses predominantly, so the whole neighborhood kind of developed around that time, the late 1890s. So looking at the block, it's a mix of two, two-story with basements, so approximately a 30-foot height. Across the street is a little bit taller, three stories with basement. And around the block, it's kind of a mix between those kind of two typologies. At the end of the block, you'll notice 536, that was gone through Landmarks last year. That included an addition to the existing, you see at the end here, which was a stables originally or in the 1890s, and then it became a parking garage, and it's now being converted into residential. And this empty, or this garage here was also, went through Landmarks as an addition, and that was approved as a three-story with a fourth-story setback. So that was something that we talked about last time we presented, to look at that context of what was approved. And so we have made modifications from the previous design to kind of incorporate some of the comments we got, which is more about aligning to the street face and creating more of a, of the bulk volume of the adjacent. So just to look at the context again, rear yards, it's a mix of kind of single-story additions as well as kind of setbacks, so it's kind of a variety of depths on the lot, as you can see. So it's a mix of the two-story plus the basement, and then usually the basement was extended in some of the cases on the block. Looking down, you see the additions. This is our site plan. So originally, the lot, actually, my client also is the owner of 453 Macon Street, so he owns both of these lots. He bought, when he bought this house, this vacant lot was purchased at the same time from the owner. So the owner of this originally building, who he purchased from, bought the lot because he wanted the safety of not having an empty lot behind him, so he has owned it since 1960s. So my current owner has purchased it, I believe it was 2003, so he's had the empty lot since then and been wanting to do something with it. So he's developing for himself, it's, you know, part of an investment for himself. But the plan is to do a three-family, so a lot of the, actually, the building next to us is also a three-family, but originally a two-family. Part of the strategy is to try and make an affordable family-type unit, so we have a three-bedroom, two three-bedrooms and one bedroom. So looking at the bulk that we revised, you can see the original, this is the zoning envelope, which we were matching previously. We revised the bulk to drop down a floor to align to the street face. So our street line, well, it did originally, but we're still aligning the street face. We've set back that now, the fourth level, back 25 foot six, so it's not visible from the street, but still trying to retain enough space to have a three-bedroom in that upper unit. This is just the bulk diagram. So you can see our revisions, we've made several revisions to the design about setting back the fourth, we dropped it a floor, we set back the fourth floor an additional six feet, I believe it was, just to get, so you don't see it from the sidewalk across the street. Also kind of simplified some of the language around the brickwork, around the openings, kind of articulating in a little bit more simple geometric openings. And yeah, something that Victor mentioned about the entryway, it's going to make a little bit more solid. There was a comment about it looking a little too commercial previously.
So I'm sorry, what have you done to the doorway that's different?
So this is a solid door instead of a glass door.
And does it have a side light?
It does have a side light, yes. It is a three-family, so we felt like for security as well that you want to see who's coming into the, into the entryway.
Okay.
View from the streetways, you can see that the fourth floor and the bulk is not visible from the street.
And we're, just to make sure, we're sure that the floor above is, you won't be able to see it from the street?
As far as my calculations, and we went down the street and we 3D modeled it and got all the dimensions, so.
Did you put up the construction?
It's an empty lot, so no. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, right.
Yeah, but based on, you know, the height from the street, and we measured across the street, so this is, I have a section of that platform, so we've set it back so that it's beyond the view. And this is, you have the wide street and then the sidewalk, as well as a green space or to the edge of the sidewalk before the green space, so the property line is actually back at this line.
Okay.
So these are revised front elevations, so it's a brick facade with an infill panel in the back, which we're looking at a cement fiber which has a kind of stone appearance of a, more of a terracotta-type effect we're looking for. This is the side elevation, so you see the setbacks of the fourth floor was set back, but that is one unit, so it's really important for us to have a three-bedroom, which is why the additional bulk in the back. This is the material palette. We did review it against the context, we're looking at a red clay and more of a natural finish instead of the kind of machined brick, we're looking at a more of a handmade brick. And this is the fiber cement panel I mentioned, comparing against the terracotta of one on Decatur Street. Our kind of typical facade details. Also, we do have a cornice, so we're trying to match not only the height, but kind of the scale of the cornice in a more modern interpretation of it, kind of a thinner edge shadow line. Also looking at the context for the openings, I know there were some comments about why not just do three openings, but we have seen in the neighborhood, and we think it kind of adds to the variety of the block, to have, especially a new building versus an 1890 building, that it shouldn't just be a copy of the adjacent, but we want to interpret the adjacent, but also interpret the neighborhood, that it's kind of a variety, and that was kind of the interest of the neighborhood, that you had different developers developing different types of styles instead of just a repeating of a single style. The context also on the street, actually beyond the property line on this block, are these wrought iron fences that come down the block and create kind of a garden setting along the street. So we are extending that line as well. Just the facade, so this is kind of a typical window opening that we're looking at doing a energy-efficient window, which so the, it's actually a casement, not a double hung, which you might see in a more traditional townhouse, but it does give us that ability to do triple pane glass and a much more efficient U-value for the glass. This is just a context-type image of this, what we're thinking for the entryway, the kind of very simple kind of opening, but allowing still light to get into that entry hallway, but still have a more of a residential feel to the door. This is be the rear yard, so it's a little bit more open in the rear yard. One of the advantages of having a townhouse is people like to have outdoor space and we have access to the outdoors, and so we really feel the backyard is important that you bring that advantage of having the daylight in the rear yard access. So we have opened the rear yard more than the front. This is our landscape plan. Just go through the typical floor plan, there's three apartments in the unit, well, they'll be, probably be sold, it hasn't been determined yet, but they may be sold as condominiums. This is the ground floor unit, which is an ADA-accessible one-bedroom unit with access to a, access to the rear yard as well as the downstairs. So in order to kind of compact the space to get it down to four stories, as you remember, before we were an additional floor, we've created kind of interlocking units, so this is the one unit that's coming from the second floor, and then the master bedroom is upstairs, so we can get three bedrooms into the layout. The third unit, starting from the third floor, having the living room, so again, we're trying to have living rooms to the rear yard to get light into the apartments. And then going upstairs, so this is the rear setback bulk in the back of the building, which is where we have the bedrooms for this unit, so it's three bedrooms. So all the mechanical will be on the roof, we've set it back towards the center of the roof so that it's not visible from the street, and it should also not be visible from the rear yards. All right, thank you.
Yes, Adi?
We've gone over this before, but I'm a little confused about the window sills or surrounds. Is it, is it brick flat or is it corbeled? What's the actual, is there a detail that takes us through what that looks like? That, that one, so I can't really tell.
Are you talking about in section on plan?
In section. It just shows it as a kind of flat, but I'm not understanding.
So basically, there's kind of a trim detail around the bottom and the top of the window, and then it sets back to brick, so there's a brick opening, and then within that opening are the, like the terracotta pieces, which are of fiber cement.
Okay, so the terracotta pieces go to this section and show us the dimension?
Yeah, so this is the terracotta piece.
Aha.
But it's surrounded on brick on the other side.
On the other side, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there other questions?
So, sorry, the terracotta piece is, is flat? It doesn't have any scoring or does it?
It's flat, correct, yeah. It has a texture to it, which is just a kind of a sandblasted texture, it has like a stone type feel to it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Right, we can close the hearing.
Okay.
Comments? It looks, the Community Board, you know, they, they recognize that they can make an attempt to reduce the height, and they don't have an issue with the choice of brick and scale in the front, but they do have concerns about the windows and the lack of symmetry as well as the drawer, and they feel, they still have concerns about the bulk at the rear. And that they have issues about the water circulation.
Okay, comments? Yes.
I think the applicant heard our comments, particularly with regard to reduction of the bulk, and particularly in the front, although it's an unusual array of windows and a unique, perhaps, way of expressing those windows architecturally, I can accept all of that as interesting, the rights of an architect to express himself in terms of creating a modern-day interpretation of the rowhouse. So I think it fits in very nicely. And I can accept, sorry, and I can accept all of it. What I'm having a little problem with, however, is in the back, and I think on sheet 13, yeah, there it is, it indicates all of my little issues. I think this shows how the building is not very friendly with its neighbors in terms of jutting out past the wall, which probably I could accept, maybe if the top floor were pushed back in some way. I looked at the plan quickly, I think that would result in at least one bedroom less, but maybe that's not exactly our concern, I'm just trying to see if it's, could be done reasonably. So I would think that it should be pushed back on the top floor. The other thing, too, I think the windows are just, or the doors, whatever they are, just too large, there needs to be more masonry, particularly on the, on the sides, it looks very thin to me, so I would suggest that maybe that as well could be done. But otherwise, the materials, the array, the articulation of windows and doors, et cetera, I can generally accept.
Yes, Dana?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Lyons's comments. I think the front facade is fine and very suitable, and that the back just still seems to kind of loom forward, and I guess one, in addition to the top floor, the question is, is the, the bottom three floors, are they extending out a lot beyond the existing additions? That's kind of hard to tell from this perspective here, which is a comment.
It's page three. Okay, just on the issue of, I agree, I think that the, it's too bulky at the rear, and I think they should set back the top floor and bring it in alignment with the other building, so that would be bringing it back to this, we can see it here, so it'll match that, even though I, I think we recognize that the floors are not really aligned, so it's a little bit different, but I think it will reduce the bulk over there. In terms of the lower floors, I'm just looking at this, and I don't know if this is an accurate depiction, but we, as you know, we approved a building, a couple of rows, a couple of lots to, what would that be, to the right in the drawing? And in that case, so there was the existing building that was converted, and then there was a lot, which we allowed for a new building to be put in there. And as shown here, the depth is, seems roughly around what the depth is, so that was at four stories, this at four stories, but actually will now be at three stories because it'll set back. So if you look at the floor plans, because I looked at those as well, and it does kind of repeat itself several times, it's really the, the living room and dining room, and you know, even setting back by three feet could require them to adjust everything, so you know, I'm, I think it's okay with just setting the top floor back, and, and I would agree with Fred if they could just maybe articulate the windows a little bit more, and I think they could work with staff on that. Are there other comments? Okay, so Fred's going to read that. Okay, so Fred's gonna read that.
In the matter of 514 Halsey Street, and the Bedford Stuyvesant Expanded Stuyvesant Heights Historic District, this is an application to construct a new building. I note that the streetscape on Halsey Street consists predominantly of two and a half story mid nineteenth century row houses and a garage building along the side of the street where the proposed house is to be constructed, and three and a half story brownstone row houses along the other side of the street. Recommend approval, noting that the construction of a new building at this site will improve the continuity of the street wall, which is currently broken by the existing vacant lot, that the proposed use of red brick with brownstone colored masonry trim at the Halsey Street facade and fiber cement panels at secondary facades will be harmonious with the variety of brick and stone masonry that currently exists at buildings on this block, while contributing to the contemporary design of the building. That the proposed Halsey Street facade featuring chamfered window openings are evocative of the depth created by projecting facade elements found at buildings on this block, and therefore provide an interesting contemporary interpretation of these architectural features. That the finestration pattern of the, at the Halsey Street facade, though asymmetrical, will feature a division of floors and a general scale that is in keeping with the buildings in this row. That the basement doorways featuring a projecting metal canopy will reflect the placement and proportion of primary entries at certain other buildings in the row. That the layout of the front areaway featuring concrete paving and planting areas will be consistent with neighborhood, neighboring areaways found on the street. That the proposed rear facade will feature full height door and window assemblies that abstractly reference floor divisions typical of historic rear facades, and will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, and that the alterations to the rear yard, including excavation, regrading, and the installation of stairs, fencing, and the large areas of planting will be consistent with treatment of rear yards on this block. I also find that the top floor, the rear facade, should be set back to align with the historic rear facades of the neighboring buildings, and that working with staff, the applicant will enlarge, reduce the size of the windows and increase the masonry on the rear facade, to create a harmonious relationship with the other buildings in the row.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners, the first public hearing item is an application for certificate of appropriateness, the Borough of Manhattan, Docket number 1915089. This is 205 East Seventeenth Street, located in Stuyvesant Square Historic District, this is a Greek Revival style townhouse, built circa 1850, 51, with later alterations. The application is to alter the facade and areaway, and install a barrier free access lift.
Good morning, Commissioners, James Rosell, Preservation Staff. 205 East Seventeenth Street is at the western edge of Stuyvesant Square Historic District. The building is located at the north side of East Seventeenth Street. The proposal is to alter the areaway and street facing basement level facade, to turn one window into a door, to service a professional office with a second areaway stairs serviced by an access lift accommodating a bottom landing of a T-shaped turnspace, providing ADA access. The designer, Agatha, excuse me, Agatha Sikaldi, is here to answer your questions, thank you.
Hi. So more pictures of the bottom of the facade where the work will be done. So we did a study of the block in order to understand that there was other second entry in this block, so most of the properties have a stoop on this block that is going ten feet away from the facade, and six feet away from the property line, so they are going away from the property line. Our building will not go over the property line, we want to stay within the four feet that we have between the property line and the facade of the building, so we will do the work within those four feet. So on the, on the top, an existing view of the building, on the bottom, existing view of the building, oh, new view, purpose view of the building, sorry. So these are just to give you an idea of the materials we want to use, we want to keep the brownstone and the bricks of the facade. In more details, on the left, existing facade, and on the right, purpose facade, so we want to excavate the existing slab in order to have two entries, and take off the right window in order to have a door instead for an office building, an office on the bottom floor. So in plan, so you can see on the left, we will excavate the two sides in order to have the landing in the center, and the two access on the right and left. So on the top of the, of the stairs, we will have a radius shape to, in order to have ADA access, and on the bottom, we'll have a T-shaped axis. So the ADA lifts will be only on the right for office access, and on the left will be the existing entry for residential. The existing door on the right, pictures, we want to recreate the same door on the, on the, on the new entry, and that you can see on the left, in order to recreate the same filling. These are more detailed drawing of the lift, so you can see the, the turning radius I was, sorry, talking about, on bigger scale, so turning shape radius on the left, and a T-turning radius on the bottom of the, of the landing. The lift will be working like this, so on the upper part, you will see that it will deploy to have the person coming on the, the lift, and then it will go down the railing, and will be able to let the person go down. While it's not in use, this view will show how it's completely enclosed, and only the arms will be up, and then some pictures on the, on the top. The new railing is created depending on existing railing on the blocks, we want to recreate the same historical filling of this railing. For the egress on the top, the existing and the bottom purpose, so on the top, there was two egress, the one in the backyard wasn't considered as an egress, because the backyard is completely enclosed. We are creating a new entry, but because of the hand lift, the, this entry not considered as egress. So we will still have an exist on the backyard, and an egress through residential on the front.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? Any speakers on this item? I have no speakers, Community Board Six recommends approval. If we have no other questions, we can close the hearing. Are there any concerns with this proposal? It seems to actually kind of fit in within the areaways, so, John?
In the matter of Docket number 19-15089, 205 East Seventeenth Street, in the Stuyvesant Square Historic District, application is to alter the facade and areaway and install a barrier free access lift. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the historic district. I recommend approval, noting that the proposed facade alterations, including the removal of a basement window and portions of simply detailed masonry below, will not eliminate significant architectural features, and will maintain the existing lintel level and width of the opening. That the proposed new entrance infill consisting of a metal and glass door with a decorative grille to match the existing grille on the main entry will be harmonious with the facade. That the installation of the proposed retractable platform lift and metal railings will provide barrier free access to the building without obscuring or eliminating any significant architectural features. That the new lift will be stored in a closed position discreetly at the areaway base and will not be visible from the public thoroughfare, and that the call button will be set into plain masonry. That the new railing design will harmonize with the materials and color palette of metal railings at other areaways at the street, and that the work will not detract from the building or the streetscape.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application's approved.
Item number two on the agenda is an application for certificate of appropriateness, the Borough of Manhattan, Docket number 1913300. This is 51 West 81st Street, located within the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, Suzo Bozart style hotel building designed by Frederick C. Brown and built in 1903-05. The application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of windows.
Good morning, Commissioners, Edgar Stork, Preservation Staff, and I present to you an application for 51 West 81st Street, which is located at the northeast corner of Columbus Avenue in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. The application proposes to establish a master plan for the installation of aluminum windows at the building, which does not recreate the historic configuration in certain windows, including at both primary facades, installing straight headed and arched paired double hung encasement windows, instead of the historic tripartite windows, and paired double hung windows instead of single double hung windows at selective locations at the primary south facade. The master plan will include a profiled brick mold panning, which is currently not present. Commissioners, please note that the commission issued staff level permits for window replacement of the single and paired double hung windows at the primary facade up to 2013. When it came to the Commissioner's attention, that the paired double hung windows did not match the historic configuration based on newly found historic documentation. Glenn Drews from Skyline Windows will present the application to you.
Good morning, and thank you. So as you can see here, the building is located in the Central Park West Historic District, right across from the Natural Museum of History on 51 West 81st Street. Here's an aerial map of the location of the building. Here, the original tax photo circa 1938. You can note that you cannot see clearly the visible primary facade, here's the 81st Street facade right here, and this is the east facade of the building, which again is not visible. Here we have another photo found of circa 1940, it shows the building next to it erected, which I will show on the next slide, you note it's not here, this is around circa pre-1922. So we go back here, and we see that the tripartite windows are located on the south facade, as well as on the west. This is a rendering done around 1960, which included the renovation of the building, as well as the, the windows you can see do remain in the tripartite configuration. Here's a blown up picture of that previous photo. Now we'll move to 1980's photos showing the existing configuration and what we are proposing for the present installation. This is the west facade of the building. Here's both primary facades, west and south. Here we have the historical configuration layout that we've determined with landmarks is what best replicates what existed originally. Noted here are the tripartite windows with a fixed lights flanking a center double hung window, what we think it is. Here are existing, currently existing, and the proposed elevations. As you can see, we have made the tripartite windows doubles in all instances. Now, one of the main reasons for proposing a double in lieu of the triple is the, what we call the K-line right here, this on the interior is separated by an interior wall, dividing this opening amongst two apartments. Again, one of the main reasons we proposed this is symmetry, if we had to replace the historical triple in kind, this window here would not, this line here would not be able to be replaced as such due to that interior wall pushing up against the existing mullion. Here's the historical of the Columbus Avenue facade, again, mostly singles, but again, here you see the centered tripartite window, which we are again replacing with doubles, as you can see right here. It's the north and east elevations, which are not visible from the main street facades. Here's a floor plan of the building, right here is the south facade, which you can see the, the wall does divide amongst two different apartments, again, bringing us back to that double configuration. I've included some of the architects' previous work, these are buildings around New York, that do show double hung windows in both a double and triple configuration, but the triple does not consist of fixed lights, which we've seen in the original historic photos. It's 218, 220 Fifth Avenue, doubles going up. 366 Broadway, again, does show doubles and triples, but does not have fixed side lights as shown in original historic photos. And 104 West 72nd Street. Again, we have proposed doing the doubles with a, a better double hung window that does include the brick mold that is not currently there. We want to return some architectural integrity to the building that currently doesn't exist, and this is one of the ways we've decided to go about that. One of the other important details to note is our mullion. This is the existing wood mullion on that K-line, where the apartments are separated. We proposed a colonial panning with a detail on the outside of the mullion that, that does not replicate the current flat condition we've seen. Again, you can see that mullion at all mullion points, we do have a detail added to it with the colonial panning. And again, the main reason for this replacement in double in kind was to keep symmetry throughout the building, as it is in a prominent area of the historic district, and the scene from all areas of that, those facades.
Can you also just explain what's happening in the lower floors?
Yes, going right to that right now. Okay, starting with the south historic elevation, we see here, we, what we can determine is that there were casements slash fixed lights in these existing round top locations that run over here at these as well, they aren't round top, but we've proposed in some casements as what we think they were, casements back in the day, this is something that is, we are open to suggestion for, as it's not a main part of our scope, but is something we're trying to replicate in full of the original windows. Existing here, as you see, is the one round top transom with no mullion going up, we've proposed to run that mullion full length up the middle. Here again on the west facade, those windows in the historical elevation, existing double hungs, and proposed casements on the second floor of that, of this west facade.
Okay. Are there any questions? Yes, Diana?
Yeah, just on the south elevation, to return to that for a minute. So, what, what, is one of the, you know, window configurations is dictated by the fact you have a wall in back?
Correct.
Is, is that just in back of one of the, is that just affect one of the, in other words?
From everywhere we've looked, it's only affected in one instance. There is another apartment here on the west facade, which we believe it could be possible, which you see these thicker mullions right here.
Right.
If it allows us to remove everything entirely and bring the strength of mullion back down to the size we propose everywhere else, we would like to do it that way.
So if you could just go back to the historical configuration of the south side for a minute? So would it be possi- it would be possible to return to the historical configuration on, of, of triple windows on the furthest and the, on both ends?
Yes, we could do that, but again, we thought symmetry would be paramount in this instance, it would give a hodgepodge of configurations. Right now, currently, all the, all these triples are doubles, which is what we're proposing. So again, it was, the idea was symmetry behind that, so you didn't have one line on a prominent facade that stuck out.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and the lower windows are, you know, they're within their own band, so I think one can think of those differently. Okay, are there other questions? All right, I'm gonna take testimony. Anna Sifter?
Good morning, Commissioners, Anna Sifter for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee appreciates the applicant's efforts to establish a window master plan. Such measures help guard our landmarks against the haphazard piecemeal changes that can significantly degrade their architectural integrity. The applicant's intent to establish continuity with the existing configurations is clear. Thus, while ideally we would see a return to the wood window frames and side lights denoted in the original architect's plans, we can understand codifying the current state. Accordingly, we appreciate the retention of the transom elements as proposed. However, we must comment on the second floor conditions. Comparing the proposed designs to both the historical and current finestration of the landmark, we see a great deal of evolution. What were originally multi-pane windows with transoms and side lights are now double hung windows with transoms, and are proposed to be replaced by casement windows, which echo neither era, and which differ both in appearance and in operation from all preceding manifestations and contexts. The historic side lights, which complemented the landmark's rusticated stone, were originally reflected across the entire facade, providing a providing a pleasing cohesion and unity in line with the architect's original intent. And the loss of these touches is most keenly felt at the lower levels, made particularly visible due to their size and proximity to the street. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee could approve of a master plan that included provisions correcting the second-floor fenestration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on the side? Right, no other speakers. Community Board Seven recommends disapproval. Okay, do we have any other questions?
Okay.
All right, just one, so, okay, all right. Any questions? Okay, we can close the hearing. I think that, to me, it seems that, you know, there's an argument, I think, for the above floors, but I think the second-floor windows should go back to its original. And it seems they can easily do it, so there'll be one which is, I don't know if that'll be one-off, but, but I think it's very awkward. Because there's a wall. But I think it's very awkward because these are arched windows, and somehow the mullion in the center is just sort of, just awkward. And I think it's better, it's also the lower floors where there's more visibility.
I agree.
Are we okay with that? So we will, as a part of the master plan, they should go to their historical configuration?
Okay.
Okay, on the second floor, below.
In the matter of LPC 19-18870, 51 West 81st Street, in the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District, a Beaux-Arts-style hotel building designed by Frederick C. Brown and built in 1903-05. The application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of windows. I note that the style, scale, materials, and details of the building are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. And further note that the historic tripartite windows were replaced building-wide prior to designation. I recommend approval with a modification, finding that all of the existing windows are modern and therefore their replacement will not cause the removal of significant architectural fabric. That the proposed smaller, single windows, which comprise the majority of windows throughout the Columbus Avenue facade, will match the one-over-one double-hung configuration of the historic windows. That some of the paired double-hung windows are divided by partition walls at the interiors. Therefore, in these locations, going back to the original tripartite configuration would not be feasible. That the proposed profiled details of the sash, mullions, and brick mold panning is in keeping with the age and style of the building and will return depth and shadow lines to the fenestration. That the dark brown finish of the windows will resemble the finish found in the historic photographs. That the proposed window configuration, although not historic, is a typical historic configuration used by the original architect and some of his other apartment building designs. And that the composition of the facades of this building are not dependent on the arrangement of window mullions. And that the implementation of a master plan will allow for the building to maintain and reestablish a uniform fenestration over time. However, I find that the second, at the second story, excuse me, the paired window configuration is not consistent with windows typically found within monumental arched openings, and therefore I recommend that the historic tripartite configuration be restored to those second-story arched windows, except at the bays, where the existing partitions make it unfeasible.
All in favor? Any opposed? Applications approved.
Commissioners, can I just clarify something? Throughout the second story, they're not all arched-headed windows. Do you, are you okay with, in the square-headed openings on the Columbus Avenue facade, that they not go back to the tripartite, or would you like those to go?
I'm sorry? All of them.
Not just the arched ones? Okay, great, thank you.
That's good.
Okay, Commissioners, the third item on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness to the Borough of Brooklyn, document number 19-18870. This is 43 Willow Place, located in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. It's a Greek Revival-style row house built in 1846. The application is to modify the rear facade and roof, construct a rear yard addition, and excavate a portion of the rear yard.
Good morning Commissioners, Bernard Arrows, Preservation Department Staff. This application is for 43 Willow Place, located on the east side of Willow Place, between Geralim and State Street. It's a Greek Revival building. It was built as a group of four. The proposal's for work at the roof and the rear. There is some restorative work going on at the front facade that's being reviewed at staff level. The work at the roof and the rear is partially visible from a public thoroughfare. You can't see the lower portion of the rear from a public thoroughfare, but you can see the upper portion. This shows the rear yard, this location of the building. This is an existing section. The proposal includes raising the roof at the rear section, which will also involve raising the rear facade slightly, as well as constructing a rear addition and excavation at the rear yard that you're going to see in the proposed section. So here you see the raise, the rear of the roof, the one-story rear extension, and the excavation of the rear yard. And here you see it in elevation. And I will leave it to the applicant to show you the visibility, and we discuss the proposal further.
Good morning Commissioners, Michael Inguey from Baxtingue Architects. Just to talk a little bit more about the visibility, and then I'll come back to this. We have renderings as well, by the way. I think I'll start with the visibility and then come back to these. So there are two points of visibility, or potential visibility. One, both of them from the side. And the first one is not easily visible, but it's got a number of trees and other elements and fences in the way of the lower portion. The upper portion is somewhat more visible, but there are evergreens really blocking it most of the year. As you get further along, there's another point of visibility, which is much more difficult to see. I wonder if the pointer works? The pointer does work, great. So this is the house next to us. And so you can see, we would be right over here, which is difficult to see. You can see kind of they've got the rooftop air conditioners and so forth, which you'll see in our rendering. So, and then nothing's visible from the front, including the rooftop air conditioners. So to go through what we're doing at the roof, we're not changing anything from this point forward. It's just this point back, from the peak back. And we are raising our roof to match everything that the neighbor has already done. This wall remains intact. You can kind of see it a little bit more on the existing and proposed elevations. So you've got the party wall between their roof height, and you can see it at the bottom, where we're maintaining that. We're doing a little under a six-foot rear addition. The depth is governed by the shallow rear lot, where we're not coming out to the face of the building next to us. And then this shows you the lower portion that's being dug out for the, for better kind of access from the lowest level. The rear addition's going to have black-clad windows and doors and a stucco finish to match the same kind of grayish-white finish that all the rear facades have currently. I think we've got some good photos of those. So you've got basically white Thera Seal or stucco on the back of all of the houses currently. Here you can see it in section. This area drops off continuously as it goes to the water, so the yards behind us are quite high. But the yards, both left and right, are at this level. And we're digging out, kind of setting it back, and digging out only at the portion closest to the house to the level of the yard. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? All right. There are a few speakers, let's see, Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. 43 Willow Place is part of Brooklyn's Colonnade Row, a row of four rare surviving Greek Revival houses built together in 1846. The only thing more remarkable than these buildings' mere survival is that they exist completely intact. The proposed rear yard addition for number 43 will be the first major alteration to this row since their construction, and it should augment the building. While the building next door sensitively and discreetly excavated to daylight their basement floor, this intervention is quite large by comparison. As this is such an important row, HDC would like to see examples in the Brooklyn Heights neighborhood where this amount of excavation was appropriate. Further, we would like to understand the rationale for the design of the rear facade treatment, particularly the large expanses of glass and glass railings, and hear how it could be appropriate, again, to the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kathryn Davis.
Hi, my name is Kathryn Davis. I'm here to represent the Brooklyn Heights Association. Dear Madam Chair and fellow Commissioners, the Brooklyn Heights Association Landmarks Committee has had the opportunity to review this application and consider its impact on our historic district. 43 Willow Place is one of four matching Greek Revival-style homes sharing a common square-columned front porch at the southern end of Willow Place. This important home is an integral part of the last Romanian colonnade rows in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. We support the applicant's request to raise the existing rear roof line to match the roof line of the adjacent property at 45 Willow Place, and thereby extending the height of the rear building wall. While we are not opposed to the concept of a rear yard addition, we do not support the applicant's handling of the fenestration at the first floor and cellar levels. The shared fabric and rhythm present in the three adjacent homes in this row is absent in the proposed addition of the subject property. The introduction of a glass railing system is likewise absent of, and at odds with, the refined historic texture of the adjacent homes in the row. Even though it does not appear to be included in the scope of work under review by your commission, we also do not support the removal of large bluestone pavers in the front yard. It is our observation that these pavers are original and are an important element of the shared facade design. Thank you for the opportunity to submit this testimony to the Commission's consideration.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christabel Gough.
Christabel Gough, for the Society for the Architecture of the City. 43 Willow Place cannot be considered in isolation from the rest of the Colonnade Row it is part of. Once the height of fashion, these magnificent rows are now few and far between, and in Manhattan, broken. And this is the only one left in Brooklyn. Preserving the unity should be a paramount consideration. The rear wall of 43 is visible, although partially masked by a fir tree. The tree is not a permanent or irregularated barrier. The conventional interior alteration driving the extension is formulaic, and surely, a modified interior layout could be found that would preserve the external unity of this important surviving Colonnade Row. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Community Board Two recommends approval of this application. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Any questions? Do you have a question, Diana?
Well, I was just going to ask if the applicant wanted to respond to any of the testimony.
Would you like to respond to any of the comments made? Another slide.
I don't know, is it working? I'll just talk loud. I don't have quite a response, but with the rear addition, just the driving factor of the doors, these are pretty, they're nice houses, and they deserve to be restored in the front and so forth. They're very shallow houses. Even with the five-foot addition, they're shallow houses. So one of the things that we were hoping to do was kind of increase that feeling when you're inside the house and bring it towards the outside, but that's the driving factor. We were pretty careful to match different elements from both sides and have it proportionally work with the rear facade, but just wanted to at least answer that one question.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? All right, in that case, we can close the hearing. All right, comments?
I don't have any issues with this. I think it's modest, and I think we've allowed for flexibility at the rear. The lower levels are not visible. And at the top, where we're increasing the height, it matches the adjacent building, and it's nestled next to another building, which is deeper and taller. So I could, I think it's appropriate as is.
I also think it's appropriate. I just think it's not a great design to have this full excavation taken up, you know, for the most part, with this kind of stair and all of this glass rail. I just think it's just cumbersome and...
The glass rail is something that we haven't seen. Okay, other comments, yes?
Yeah, if this was not an intact, original row, I would have definitely a different take on it. But, you know, my driving force is that we're charged with assuming that something will be a, will enhance the district. And I think that, I don't think that this is modest at all. I think it's actually rather cumbersome on the back of the building. I agree with the testimony that the evergreen trees are not irregular, and they should be considered a temporary visual block to this thing. So I can't support it as it is.
Right, I just want to say, you know, these things are sort of parsed out, but the overall scope includes restoration work in the front of the building. And that's being done at staff level. So if you're talking about entire project, then there are enhancements to the district. But others? Are we otherwise okay with it? Okay, Ari? Oh, it's Ann, sorry. I understand, Michael, your issue.
In the matter of LPC 19-18870, 43 Willow Place, Brooklyn Heights Historic District, Greek Revival-style row house built in 1846. The application is to modify the rear facade and roof, construct a rear yard addition, and excavate a portion of the rear yard. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate any significant architectural features, that the modest increase in height of the rear facade and enlargement of the top-floor masonry openings will not disrupt a unified row of building elements, eliminate a significant roof profile, or significantly alter the scale of the rear facade. That the modifications at the rear facade and roof will be in alignment with similar alterations at the adjacent building. That the alterations to the roof and masonry openings will be minimally visible at a distance from public thoroughfares from oblique viewpoints within the context of buildings of varying heights. That the proposed rear addition will be modest in size and will not overwhelm the building. That the proposed addition will be consistent with other rear yard additions in terms of height and will not project further into the rear yard than the existing additions within the block. That the proposed addition will not be visible from a public thoroughfare. That the proposed excavation at this small yard within a context of rear yards featuring a variety in grade levels will not diminish any unifying aspect of the central green space. That the excavation will be done in compliance with the Department of Buildings Regulations under the supervision of a licensed professional engineer or registered architect to protect the building's facades and the adjacent buildings. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Unopposed, so applications approved.
Commissioners, the last item on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness, document number 19-20459. This is 188 Prospect Park West, located in the Park Slope Historic District Extension. This is a neo-Renaissance-style movie theater designed by Harrison G. Wiseman and Mangeson and Kleinerdard Associates, and built circa 1928. The application is to replace storefront infill, infill, seal a masonry opening, and install signage and poster boxes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Abby Harlbut, Preservation Staff. This application is to replace storefront infill, seal a storefront opening, and install signage and poster boxes at the first floor level of the building at one eighty-eight Prospect Park West, the Pavilion Theater, located on the southwest corner of Fourteenth Street and Prospect Park West in the Park Slope Historic District Extension. The applicant is here to describe the proposal in detail.
Good morning. I'm Marty Capell from Think Architecture and Design. The applicant for the project. I would say that we're presenting today a series of somewhat disconnected interventions in the building, most of which have been submitted to you for practical or functional reasons. Our attempt in dealing with all of them is to deal with them holistically in a way that's in keeping and harmonious with the building, yet at the same time, help us solve these functional issues that have come up in the course of design and construction. So, the first part they were looking at has to do, well, in general, overview. There are a number of things. One is how we're treating this storefront area in the north corner of the building. Second, we are looking at requesting permission to enlarge the building vestibules by pulling the storefront forward, not quite to the face of the existing box office, but slightly behind. Then, there are other sign boxes that we're asking permission to add here, replacement of those that are already there, and also modifications to the existing marquee of the building. These are pictures of the building in various iterations. Most of these were still the Sanders Theater, showing the marquee and the various external aspects of the building design. These show proposed and existing, the existing building and proposed marquee, which is mostly the existing marquee with some additions in terms of signage and lettering, the addition or replacement of the existing kind of asymmetrical and kind of haphazard array of signage boxes at the south side with a more considered group of them here, and the infill of the existing aluminum and glass storefront with brick to match the existing and sign boxes to be consistent with those being added at the south side of the building. Difficult to see in elevation, but also the moving forward of the, of the two main entry doors. Also here, you'll see the painting and the treatment of the fire escape railing and the fire escape doors themselves. Existing condition, where the theater was called the Pavilion, now the Nighthawk, and we'll get to more specific aspects of the signage further in the presentation. We're looking at the two flanking portions of the ground floor, sorry, to the south, where we are proposing six sign boxes on the right. The south, the north, we're providing, proposing four. In the details, we're looking at the brick infill and patching. We're also going to add the stone base where it's missing, sorry, in the existing condition of the building at that location. Showing the various conditions of the door and the moving of the doors forward. There are practical aspects for this, having to do with adequate egress and entry, and also to minimize queuing on the outside of the building during performance times. This is showing the condition at the north storefront and the infill of that condition. Currently, the approved condition has a knee wall, which the toilets are attached, and a screen above it, and we feel that infilling the panel with brick to match the existing and adding the somewhat symmetrical flanking sign boxes would be an improvement to that situation. Moving of the doors forward. Here, you can see the impact of the painting of the fire escape, the painting of the fire doors currently red, the changing in the configuration of the sign boxes to the south, the addition of the sign boxes to the north, and the reconfiguration, minor renovation, and new signage at the marquee. Doors in the existing condition and move forward. The existing sign boxes on the south side, the new sign boxes more carefully considered with the brick infill and the marble panel restored at the bottom, and the replacement of the aluminum glass storefront with another niche similar to the one there would be at the south, with similar sign boxes and brick to match the existing. The existing Pavilion marquee above and the proposed new Nighthawk lettering with minor changes to the signage below. We should say we work with, let there be neon, affirm with a great deal of experience in both new and historic neon signs to come up with a design that both announces the new use, the new tendency in the building, but is consistent with that kind of signage that would have been there previously. Again, the matching of the brick, which we understand we still need to do some work to find the exact match, which we are certainly willing to do, and details about the signage on the marquee. And that's it.
Thank you.
Project is under construction.
Any questions? Yes, Dan, Dana, and then Michael.
Yeah, just on LPC eighteen, it shows signage on the side as well. Is...
Maybe billboards?
No, the Nighthawk, the sign on the actual marquee. So, will there be side signs on the marquee, or there's...
Yes, yes, in fact, there would be.
So, it's similar to...
Yes.
I just wanted to...
Oh, you got it.
Thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Abby if we've seen samples of the brick, replacement brick.
All we've seen right now is what's on the presentation, and so, not yet.
Good, all right.
And what's on there is not clean brick either, so it's what they've got.
Okay.
And it's in our intention to do as close a match as we possibly can.
Intention, sir.
We are committed to.
Are you going to change the seats?
Actually, there's not a single existing seat.
Last time I went to the movies there, I stuck to the seat. I want to be sure.
You won't have to worry about putting your hand in the seats.
Thank you.
I can't believe I actually brought my kids to that old...
Thank you. We have one speaker, Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. Echoing our testimony about the building next door a few weeks ago, HDC lauds this proposal and what it seeks to achieve, preserving an iconic corner of Brooklyn and the entrance to Prospect Park in its built form without expanding and mutating the architecture. The proposed changes to this building essentially undo all of the poor alterations from decades past and regularizes the facade. We applaud the retention of the marquee, and the signage is absolutely appropriate. We are in awe that this building will once again function as its intended original use as a theater, and we wish Nighthawk all the success in this new location. We thank them for proving that occupying a landmark building does not have to mean the building has to go away or be altered in a terrible way as previously proposed last year. Thank you.
Not by us.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm sorry, may I? Christabel Goff for the Society for the Architecture of the City. We totally agree with everything that HDC just said, and thank you, Nighthawk.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? All right, Community Board Six recommends conditional approval. The committee believed that the fire escape and its access door should be painted black in keeping with the historical character of New York City's fire escapes, and additionally, the request of the applicant reconsidered the font style of the theater name on the marquee. All right. Are there any more questions? We can close the hearing. I think all the changes are appropriate, and I don't have any issues with the change of font, because I think, I mean, I think the applicant's intention is going back to neon. It still is drawing from, you know, historic precedence, but it is also about the new theater. And all the other changes are, as I think we heard testimony, is really improving some of the unfortunate alterations of the ground floor and bringing it back. Any other comments? Okay, Diana?
In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness for Brooklyn, LPC nineteen two oh four five nine, one eighty-eight Prospect Park West, Park Slope Historic District Extension. Application is to replace the storefront infill, seal masonry opening, and install signage and poster boxes. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Park Slope Historic District Extension. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed work will not conceal, damage, or replace any significant architectural features, that the proposed recessed brickwork at the north bay will recall the historic storefront openings in terms of proportion and height, and will not preclude the reinstillation of a storefront in future. That the change in plan of the proposed entrance infill closer to the building facade will not affect any significant design composition of the building, that the simple flat profiles of the proposed wood and glass entrance infill will match the existing entry doors that are to be replaced and are consistent with infill historically found in buildings of this type, age, and style, and that the neon signage at the marquee and the proposed poster boxes will be in keeping with signage typically found at movie theaters in terms of size, type, and placement, and will not overwhelm the building. However, that the proposed brickwork may not match the historic brickwork in terms of texture and finish. Therefore, I recommend that the applicant work with his staff to ensure that the replacement brickwork matches the historic brickwork in terms of courting materials, dimensions, texture, details, and finishes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application's approved. Commissioners, we actually have one more item that we're going to bring forward. So, we're bringing forward an item actually for calendaring and consideration as an individual landmark. As you'll hear in this presentation, the Morris T. Lewis House is a mansion designed by notable architects Hard and Short. It's located on Fourth Avenue in Brooklyn Sunset Park neighborhood. LPC Research Staff has been surveying the area in the neighborhood and identified it as a significant building through that process. We learned that the building has an approved alteration application. That's before Department of Buildings. That would allow the demolition of this building and the construction of a new building, although working with DOB, we're working with DOB to understand when the actual permit will be issued. As you know, if the permit is issued, then that would be grandfathered at the time of designation, but given these extenuating circumstances, we thought it prudent to bring this forward to the commission for consideration. Go ahead, Jessica. Oh, you have to read that into record. Sorry.
It's okay. So, this would be LP two six oh eight, five five oh one, Fourth Avenue, AKA four twelve fifty-fifth Street, four oh four and a half fifty-fifth Street, Dr. Morris T. Lewis House, Brooklyn, Block eight thirty-one, Lot eight. Item proposed for the commission's calendar is a Renaissance revival style mansion designed by Hard and Short and built in nineteen oh seven.
Hi, this is the Morris T. Lewis House. I propose item for calendaring. The former Dr. Morris T. Lewis House is a historic mansion constructed in nineteen oh seven, designed by architectural firm Hard and Short for Dr. Morris T. Lewis, president of the nearby Bay Ridge Savings Bank. The Renaissance revival style building is the only freestanding mansion in the neighborhood of Sunset Park and is a fine example of early twentieth-century residential architecture. The building is located in Sunset Park, Brooklyn, on the corner of Fifty-Fifth and Fourth Avenue. The L-shaped lot includes the mansion itself and two one-story non-contributing structures. Sunset Park was developed in the nineteenth and early twentieth century primarily as a residential community associated with a working waterfront. Streetscapes were typically lined by speculative rowhouses primarily for the working and middle class, and many were multifamily. This house was constructed for Dr. Lewis in nineteen oh seven, when he was president of the Bay Ridge Savings Bank located at Fifth Avenue and Fifty-Fourth Street. The bank became the area's largest banking institution at the time, and the Lewis House stands out as the only single-family mansion in the neighborhood and has a prominent presence on the corner of Fourth Avenue. Lewis commissioned architects Hard and Short for the design of the house. Hard and Short began their partnership in nineteen oh one and were prominent New York City architects in the early twentieth century. Some designated landmarks by the firm include Alon Court at one eighty-two West Fifty-eighth Street, the Studio Building at forty-four forty-eight West Seventy-seventh Street in the Central Park West Historic District, and the Red House at three fifty eighty-fifth Street in the Riverside West End Historic District Extension. Dr. Morris T. Lewis House is significant as Sunset Park's only freestanding mansion, designed by an important New York City architect and a fine example of Renaissance revival style, which retains a high degree of integrity today. The research department recommends it is calendared for consideration as an individual landmark.
Thank you, Jessica. Are there any questions?
Is it vacant?
Yes. It's, I believe it's occupied right now, isn't it?
But there's a demolition threat? Is that the issue?
They have filed at the Buildings Department for, it's an alteration, but it's results in the demolition of the building and a new building.
Is that an alteration?
Interesting question.
It is an alteration.
Right. I'm just going to, it's a, it's a technical issue. It's an alt permit, so what that means is, you know, I'll defer to people at the Buildings Department. But what we can gather is that this building will be taken down and a new building will be put in its place. So, yes, and so, we think it's worth considering and for us to continue to work on getting this designated, but I think we should recognize that, that there's a process already at the Buildings Department and that the issuance of that permit may not, our calendaring may not be able to stop the issuance of the permit within the timeframe that we can act on it.
So, it's a time issue?
It's a, it's a time issue. Mark, do you want to just explain? Because we also have our requirements regarding setting a public hearing, which we are required to do, and notice for that, and that we can work on, but there is a couple of weeks in between where, in fact, they could get the permit. Mark, do you want to just...
Sure. So, the Landmarks Law requires that we have to hold a hearing, and it's a ten-day notice requirement for that hearing before we can designate. There's also this, the forty-day protocol that we have working with DOB, and that protocol, DOB has agreed to sort of take its full forty statutory days to consider an application once it's complete before taking it in action. And the issue we have here is this, this application is approved, but no permit has been issued, and under the Landmarks Law, only issued permits have a grandfathered status. And so, we are trying, we are working with DOB to clarify how this, the forty-day protocol applies in this situation and how much time we have left to consider this building. So, that's...
Is this a changed situation? I'm thinking back years and years ago to a project that our firm became involved in when, I think it was seven twelve Fifth Avenue, the famous La Leek windows that were discovered. There must have been permits for all of that, and the windows were discovered in a, you know, in getting ready to demolish these buildings, and then they were calendared over a weekend and saved, I think. Can't we do that anymore?
I don't know the specifics of the actual timing, but the ten-day requirement, that's been in the Landmarks Law for forever. So, I'm not sure when it was discovered or when calendaring happened in the hearing, but in that case. But we're working closely with DOB to clarify the situation and how they interpret the forty days and count, and count the days, and so, we're just, because we just haven't gotten clarification from DOB. So, we want to give ourselves the opportunity at least to potentially save the building, depending on what the DOB concludes.
So, what we recommend is that be calendared today. We will publish it in the public record, and we'll have our hearing on March sixth, and that will fulfill the Landmarks Law of ten days. And in the meantime, we'll continue to monitor what's happening in the Buildings Department and DOB. Yes, Dana?
Yeah, I just, I have a question. There's a large lot on the corner of Fifty-Fifth Street, which looks like it has also got maybe, I don't know, something...
Right. Let me just say one. I think that, you know, we have, we're interested in the building, and I think that during the process, we can think about what should be calendared, but it's kind of a placeholder over the entire site right now. So, there are some portions which are non-contributing, I think was the word that Jessica used, that may not be necessary to designate, and so, we can continue to refine the lot parameters. We're really talking about the building, which is at the corner, and something, you know, that other remaining portion of the site, something could happen.
Could be developed, yeah, yeah.
I think that would be fine. There's zoning in place that has, you know, limits its height, I believe, but we can check that as well.
But this is the only large structure like that?
Right, and it's really... Right, and it's really, it's, it's quite interesting, and Sunset Park is an area that, you know, we're looking at, it's an area which doesn't have a lot of landmarks. Fourth Avenue has a lot of changes that have happened, so it's, while it's not as, there's some other buildings that have been landmarked in Manhattan which are larger and, but I think in this context, this building does stand out, so I think it definitely deserves our continued investigation and an attempt to try and get this designated. Okay, so with that, I make a move to calendar this building. And this building is now calendared, and we will hold our public hearing on March sixth. Thank you, Commissioners.
Questions? Wow.